We will reconvene this meeting and start with our public hearing items. So if the council members could, here we go.
Yes. Item number 22 is adoption of a resolution approving an economic subsidy report required by government code section 53083, prepared by Kaiser Marston and Associates, and approving an incentive agreement with CarMax Superstore California LLC, a Virginia corporation, to provide for a sales tax rebate not to exceed $5 million over a 10-year term in order to attract a car dealership to the city of Oceanside, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement.
We'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff and public.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff, and I received a couple of emails.
And provide to the council.
Staff.
Deanna.
Good after, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Deanna Larson, Assistant City Manager. So as mentioned, the item before you tonight is an incentive agreement for CarMax. And we will be requesting that you adopt a resolution approving an economic subsidy report and improving an incentive agreement with CarMax Superstore California. So CarMax has identified this area for another store, and with the assistance of city staff did a site search and identified a property, and has negotiated a long-term lease to open a store on Plaza Drive. This is just south of the 78, near Thunder, next door to the DMV. However, in order for CarMax to make the economics of this site work to justify their investment in this store, they have requested an economic incentive. Staff has negotiated agreement with them based on the same basic parameters that were used when we attracted Massey Nissan in 1998, with a couple changes. The baseline is that the city would keep the first $100,000 in annual sales tax, index 3% annually for inflation, and CarMax to receive the balance as an incentive up to a maximum of 5 million or 10 years, whichever occurs first. CarMax will keep the location open a minimum of 15 years from the date of the initial incentive payment, or the entire amount will need to be repaid, and they will be required to ensure that prevailing wages are paid for site construction. California law requires that an economic subsidy report be prepared to analyze the economic subsidy that is being provided. The city contracted with Kaiser Marston Associates, Inc. to prepare this report, and it demonstrates estimated tax revenue to the city over the 15-year term to be 6.7 million in sales tax, excluding any Measure X revenue, and approximately $467,000 in property tax. In addition, the project should generate 55 to 65 full-time, 10 to 20 part-time jobs, and then approximately 13 full-time equivalent construction jobs when the facility is constructed. The public purposes of this subsidy would be to create jobs, to help increase our jobs-to-housing ratio, which is one of the city's published goals, to increase sales and property tax per capita. This is another economic development goal that has been established. And Oceanside actually has the second lowest per capita sales tax of any city in San Diego County. We only receive about 2/3rds of the average city in San Diego County, or in the state of California for that matter. So increasing sales tax and bringing new sales tax generators into Oceanside is a big priority of ours. It would also recruit a new business to the city and help develop a vacant, underutilized site. City staff, economic development staff, have been working for a number of years to try to attract economically viable use to the site that would help produce revenue for the city. And other uses that have been proposed have included things such as an assisted living facility and residential mixed use, which would cost more to serve the site than we would receive. And so in order to attract a business like CarMax that would provide a significant economic benefit to the city of Oceanside, an incentive is required. And with that, the staff has recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the economic subsidy report and approving the incentive agreement with CarMax Superstore California, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And Jason Pruitt with CarMax is here in the audience and available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
We do have public on this item. Nadine Scott.
Good evening, Nadine Scott, Loma Alta neighborhood. Needless to say, a lot of us were shocked to see this. This isn't a typical project that would come out in the special notice list. We all get notification of applications for projects, so this is a little different. I'm all cool with CarMax. I think it's a great idea for that piece of property. What I don't like is, we just voted for Measure X because our town is broke, and we wanted to give ourselves a little sales tax across the board to everybody in town, including our tourists and others visiting our city. It's more fair to spread it across. I did support Measure X. Now all of a sudden, we're giving a $5 million subsidy away, and they have negotiating rights until 2023. I don't know if a five-year subsidy agreement is valid. Maybe you can answer, because they haven't done a development plan? I assume they're going to have to do one? Does that extend that time out that far? Is that a reasonable amount of time? John shaking his head, but that was my question. I'm not really in favor of that length. I understand the subsidy itself seems okay, but it also feels like a little slap in the face because we just voted for our sales tax. So if you could answer the time question, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
So this is a public hearing item. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward this time. Mayor Weiss, I see you now.
We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Yeah, this is kind of the standard agreement to have to bring people in. And actually, we dodged a bullet on this piece of property because years ago, actually, Toys R Us was proposed to go there. And so I think we were pretty lucky to avoid that, I guess. So I'm going to move staff's recommendation and adopt a resolution approving the economic subsidy report, and from there. Thanks.
Councilmember Feller.
I'd like John to answer the question, please, first.
I think there might have been two questions. So with respect to Measure X, the Measure X sales tax that are generated by this project are not subject to the rebate. We define that within the terms of the agreement. Secondly, with, I think the question is, if there's a development plan application submitted, does it somehow extend the life of this agreement? And that answer is no. I think that was what the question was. This agreement does not pre-commit the city to approve any land use permits. Those are going to have to go through the normal process, and that process will not extend the terms of this agreement.
Thank you. You had, Don, about three slides before this, prevailing wage. What was that about?
Councilmember Feller and councilmembers mayor, in the state of California, rebate of taxes is considered a public subsidy, and it thus triggers the payment of prevailing wage on the project. So they will be required.
I didn't see it in the backup, so thank you for that clarification.
Yes, they will be required to pay prevailing wage.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I mean, I think we all, we all thought of different things that might happen on this piece of property, but in fact, nothing has happened, and so it hasn't really generated any funds. And here we have the potential for generating, in the first 15 years, $6.7 million. And hopefully, this will be something ongoing. So we know that we lost a lot when Car Country came in to Carlsbad. We lost all of, many of our car sales lots. And so this is something that would definitely benefit the city. So, and we need this incentive. I heard someone say that the incentive looks okay, so I don't see any real opposition by the public regarding the incentive, because we will, the city will net 6.7 million in 15 years. So, and also, I'm looking at full-time jobs, which for me is a high priority. So I'm going to, I'm going to support this. Thank you very much for the motions and the second, but this is, I feel that this is a very important economic development project for the city, and we need to move forward. And I, you know, hope that this sails through so that we can begin earning some of the, well, the $100,000 at least, on a yearly basis. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you, Mayor. Deanna, could you answer a couple of questions that are just sort of general questions, like, why would we want a business like this here in Oceanside?
Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, a business like this produces a large amount of revenue to help support city services. CarMax would actually become the top single sales tax generator in the city of Oceanside. Even with the $100,000 subsidy, they still would be in the top 25. So this is something that would not happen without the subsidy, and provides a great gain to the city as a result.
So the revenue to the city, you said it was $100,000 a year for the first 10 years? That's during the time of the, under the subsidy?
The subsidy, each year, the city will receive the first $100,000. The balance of any base sales tax revenue that's received would be rebated back to CarMax until they reach a cap of either 5 million or 10 years, whichever occurs first. So the city is guaranteed to receive a minimum of $100,000, and that base $100,000 would increase by 3% per year for 10 years.
After the 10 years, that's over, and we will receive our planned tax revenue from the sales tax.
At that point, the city would receive 100% of the sales tax revenue generated on the site, of the city's share of the sales tax revenue.
Okay. And I'm just curious about, is it typical that cities have to incentivize this sort of project to come in? It's, I've read about Walmart strapping communities to the wall to subsidize their operations and then closing when they found out they weren't making any money. And apparently, they didn't have this payback clause that we have in here, because cities have no idea what to do with these massive vacant boarded-up buildings. So we have a plan that takes it from concept to execution, and if they conclude before 15 years, they pass back the subsidy. So I guess my question is, is, again, is this typical of what cities are expected to do? Couldn't we just let go of it and have them go over to Vista?
So in the state of California, there aren't a lot of economic subsidies. The most common businesses that do receive sales tax subsidies are car dealerships and very large retailers such as Costco's. Other than that, it's not common at all in California to provide sales tax rebates, but this does fit into that category of a very unique type of use, very high sales tax generator. And as explained, they would become our top sales tax generator, and even the base $100,000 puts them in the top 25 sales tax producers in the city of Oceanside. So it's a very positive gain for the city, and we do feel like we have protections built in to make sure the city does receive the full benefit.
Great. Okay, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
I think you could probably just walk to DMV, too, and that'll save a lot of F-labor.
Get your license and then go buy a car.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Item number 23 is introduction of an ordinance, submitting Articles 1, 4, 4A, 10, 10C, 13, and 30 of the Oceanside Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and adoption of a resolution requesting California Coastal Commission certifications of Articles 1, 4, 4A, 10C, and 30, and inclusion in the local coastal program.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Just staff.
Staff.
Yeah, public and staff.
Staff, and we received some emails this afternoon.
Staff and public, specifically inquiries regarding whether we are closing down the planning commission decision-making process.
Yes.
Staff and emails.
All materials been provided to the council.
Hello, Amy.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, the zoning amendment and local coastal plan amendment under consideration consists of two primary components. The first involves a text amendment to Article 1 of the zoning ordinance that would affect discretionary application review procedures of projects that involve both legislative and quasi-judicial actions. Currently, procedures allow consideration and final approval of development plans by the planning commission. However, the commission's discretion on zoning and general plan amendments is limited to recommendations only. This procedural split creates a cumbersome review process at the city council level for projects that include quasi-judicial and legislative actions, especially when appeals or calls for review are filed for entitlements that have been approved by the planning commission while legislative actions are pending before the city council. Examples of such situations that have occurred over the last couple of years include projects known as, by the names of Via Estoria, Vine Street Collective, Park Villas, Fairfield Inn, Melrose, and Oceanside, and Riverview Springs. The intent of the text amendment is to create a thorough and a predictable review process and eliminate the possibility of piecemeal project reviews. The proposed amendment would not preclude a review of development plans by the planning commission, and in staff's opinion, would not ultimately alter their discretion-making authority on development plans that are contingent upon approval of zoning and general plan amendments. As section 140 of Article 1 is proposed to be amended, projects that involve both quasi-judicial and legislative actions would be reviewed by the planning commission, and their recommendations would be forwarded to the city council. The council would then review and take final action on all project applications. This modification will permit comprehensive review of more complex and controversial proposals by the city council in their entirety, would allow more opportunities for community input and participation, and eliminate issues related to filing, to the filing of appeals, such as payment of fees and collection of signatures. The proposed change in review procedures is consistent with those in place in other jurisdictions in San Diego County, including the city of Carlsbad, Vista, and Chilavista. I will move on to the second part of this amendment, and I will summarize with planning commission's recommendations. The second component involves text revisions to Articles 4, 4A, 10C, 13, and 30 of the zoning ordinance to incorporate previously approved regulations that relate to emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing, which were inadvertently left out from the city documents in 2013. The planning commission considered the proposed amendment in their entirety on October 22nd, and after extensive deliberation, voted unanimously to forward only the portion of the text amendment relative to the emergency shelters and supportive housing to the city The commission excluded from their motion Article 1 modifications and requested that it return to the planning commission for action as a separate item. Appropriate legal notification has been provided for the public hearings on this item, in addition, a nine-week notice on a 1/8-page newspaper ad for the, was published on the San Diego Union Tribune on September 25th, 2018. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Articles 1, 4, 4A, 10, 10C, 13, and 30 of the zoning ordinance, and adopt a resolution requesting California Coastal Commission certification and inclusion of the articles pertaining to the coastal district as part of the LCP. I'm going to turn this over now to the Development Services Director to address a couple of additional issues related to the emails that we have received at the end of the day today.
Thank you, Amy. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I wanted to address some of the issues that were raised and some correspondence that you received from the public today regarding the process in which this zoning code amendment was presented to the city council. It was a little bit out of the ordinary, as Amy mentioned, when this was presented to the planning commission on October 22nd. The majority of the planning commission did not support staff's recommendation. The commissioners that were, I'm sorry, however, the commission did ask that we go back to them for further consideration of the portion that Amy explained that has to do with entitlement packages coming to the city council in their entirety versus in piecemeal fashion. It was a little bit out of the ordinary, and the commission did ask this item to go back before them, but at the end of the day, staff decided to go ahead and take this amendment back to the city council as originally proposed, rather than taking it back to the planning commission. And I wanted to kind of explain why we decided to do that, because it is out of the ordinary. The reasons that we decided to come back or straight to the city council rather than going back to the planning commission was that the most vocal opponents on the planning commission that did not support it, and it was a 5-2 vote to not support staff's recommendation on the item by the commission, the most vocal opponents on the planning commission made it pretty clear to us during the testimony, and there was quite a bit of discussion that they would never support such a change. They felt that by only allowing them to make recommendations on certain items such as development plans and conditional use permits, that they felt that we were essentially kind of circumventing their authority or cutting out public participation. But in fact, neither of these assertions are correct. Despite the concerns raised by some commissioners, in practical terms, the proposed amendment does not change their authority. As it stands today, when you have a project before you, and Amy gave you some of the examples that include both quasi-judicial and legislative actions, the final authority on those projects rests with the city council, because those other approvals, whether it be a development plan or a conditional use permit, can't be effective unless the city council also approves, you know, in these cases, a general plan amendment. So in reality, nothing with respect to the final authority on these projects is changing. Also, contrary to some of the recent correspondence received, the proposed zoning amendment in no way lessens the opportunity to weigh in on these land use decisions, because the number of public hearings before the planning commission and the city council remains the same. That does not change. So the process remains the same in terms of the chain of review. The only thing that changes is rather than making a final decision on a development plan or a conditional use permit, when it's packaged with a larger project, the planning commission would be making a recommendation to the city council. We really feel strongly that this actually helps the public participation process, and the reason for that, as Amy touched upon, is it ensures that when a project gets to the city council for their review, the entire project is up for review and consideration rather than just a piece of it, as it stands today, in order to ensure that the entire project gets to the city council for review. Someone who's opposed to a project would have to file an appeal, which involves an $1,800 fee or gathering signatures from the neighbor. If the amendment is approved, is proposed, that no longer is the case. The entire project will automatically go to the city council, so there will, there will no longer be a need to either call for review a portion of it, or have members of the public have to appeal a portion of it, from our standpoint. And it's very common practice in many cities, in most cities, as a matter of fact. It makes sense just to bring the entire package to the city council at once, as opposed to piecemeal it and have to call certain parts for review. We see it really kind of as just a housekeeping item. I understand it's a very technical issue, so it's sometimes difficult to explain that, whether it's to our planning commission or even to the public. But I just wanted to take this extra opportunity to try and clarify the reasons why we brought it forward the way we did. Thank you.
Yes, we have public on this item. I'll call you up two at a time. Our first two speakers are Joan Bachmann, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Hello, Joan Bachmann, resident seaside neighborhood. I want to bring up, I was a planning commissioner for nine years. I've been appearing before the city council and planning commission since the late '80s, and have weathered the storm of general plan amendments the last time we did, the entire city. Every review process you can have is helpful, every step of the way. New issues come up, new understandings happen, and it takes a lot of focus to really understand some of the issues. It also takes some background. And I've studied city planning a bit. I didn't get a degree in it. I got an engineering degree, but I have read quite a few books and took it very seriously as a planning commissioner, as many of the planning commissioners do. And it really takes that kind of a focus. We have seen projects come before you that were appealed from the planning commission or whatever, and the decisions really weren't always good city planning. They were more ideological. They were dealing with some sort of financial issues, which really aren't in the best interests of the city and the residents long-term for livability. And so I have great concerns about the quality of decisions made without extensive review processes. I think I'm also seeing that on El Corazon. Going through Economic Development Commission is not helpful for a park. And so that process, in my view, is definitely broken. So because I think there, there needs to be a serious reason to do it, people bring it when things are on the line, the planning commission needs to have discretionary review. And if something wants to be appealed, it can be appealed. But I think we need to really get back to more of a vision-based approach. We've had some visions that have really not been accepted, not been taken seriously. And in their absence, we've had lack of vision and ideologue type of an approach, which really has not served us well. And we are missing the boat on a number of things with that. So I support the planning commission and the planning commission having a stake in it, and then let it be, let it be appealed, if that's what's going to happen. But I really think that you cannot focus as much as they can on those particular issues. You have many more issues on your plate, and I just don't see the same level of focus. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. I don't know really where to start on this one, because, once again, this is something I disagree with. That is mixing subjects, number one. This should be a one-subject item, but you're mixing homelessness, you're mixing Carlsbad and other cities, comparing them with Oceanside, you're mixing the planning commission. This is just like a basket with everything in the house thrown into it, and you're calling it the same. This is part of the reason I sit here, because I've seen it too long with things brought before you, that if you're not here, you're out of sight, you're out of mind. And you better be willing to stand up and run up and get your slip in real fast, because what happens is, you're going to be run over. Number one, you guys do a great job in vetting people who get on the planning commission. You select lions. They have teeth, they have claws. What this proposal, and I, Part C, does, it declaws your lions. It takes the teeth out of your lions. They take, and if you go to their meetings and you listen to them, they take and go through the vetting of every item that comes before, and they go out in the field, they investigate. They do the job that would take you hours and hours and hours of your time. What is the reason this is actually coming before you? I have a feeling what it is, is that apparently applicants feel that they can get more out of view than from the planning commission. That's my feeling. And if they peel it to you, great, they're going to do it. But if you want it that way, let's be open and honest, just do away with the planning commission. Let you do it. But don't be behind the scenes and a little bit nitpicky and stuff. Don't take and be dishonest. This item should be very simple, and it should be one item only, and that should be the planning commission and what your future choice is for them. I would consider it a very good measure if you would take it as such, return it back to staff, and say, this, you know, separate these three things and bring it back. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Cindy Rocco and Arlene Hammerschmidt.
I must have known. Cindy Rocco, Honorable Mayor and Council. I was at the October 22nd meeting at the planning commission when this exact item came to vote in front of the commission with a 5-2 no-pass vote. Once the language in Article 1 was removed, it Once the language in Article One was removed, it was, it did fly with a full count. And now we have the same, and it was asked that it would be separated from the attached items, the other items besides Article One, at the planning commission meeting after that first fed vote. But yet now it's here to, it looks like in the same exact form. And what's happening here is, even Commissioner Forlander had said, one of the issues here from a public perspective is, it's presented as a coastal plan amendment. We're tying everything together. This has to do with our affordable housing emergency shelter for the season. It's really not a big deal. But when you totally bypass a legislative action, or an approval action by a commission, and then just move that on to another power without any balance of power, I think we all know in our hearts fundamentally that it's the wrong way to go as a society. Right now, if, for example, under this mandate, if North River Farms had been presented, it would have gone only to you for full approval. If it had been approved, there would have been no prior planning process that would have taken place. The other thing that I really just want you to think about is, even for today, how would I appeal the addition, to appeal your decision to allow this absolution of power to occur? Or if a plan comes to here, do I have to go to the district attorney to appeal a project now? Because it's not decided on yet. It's only decided here. So I have to go to another legislative body to appeal the project. So, just some food for thought. So please eliminate Article One from your vote today. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and staff. Arlene Hammerschmidt, from Rurish Fire Mountain. I second everything Joan Bachmann said, and everything Jimmy Naught said, and everything Cindy said. This, I have, most of you know that you've seen my face a lot in the last year and a half or two years. I've been at planning commission meetings more. I will say, from my experience of digging into staff reports and trying to understand staff reports, that the planning commission asks deep questions of staff that honestly I have not heard in this body. And I think Jimmy had a good point. It's because that's the planning commission's job, that they volunteer for, to dig deep and ask the tough questions, that frankly, that's only a tiny part of your job. So it's no wonder we get deeper questions from the planning commission than we do here. They understand it deeper. We need as many opportunities for public input as possible, not fewer. We need the public to understand and be invited to ask questions. I don't know exactly how this would all play out, but you know, now that we know about the what-if that could happen, our staff is really smart, alert, and vigilant. It's kind of like playing a game, you know? Oh, God, that happened. We're not gonna let that happen again. We're gonna be sure to watch for that curveball. We're smart. We can handle that. So, you know, I also believe the planning commission does a really excellent job of representing the public's, the public, and the public concerns, and listening to the public. They do a fantastic job. Just honor them, keep it in place, stay vigilant, keep it as transparent and long as it possibly, as it can be. It's, as somebody mentioned, the longer these things are in the barrel, the more we understand about them, the more little odd holes show up that need to be covered or fixed. So shortening the process doesn't help, doesn't help the citizens of Oceanside, in my humble opinion. And just, I have my own humble opinion, it was a travesty to remove the planning commission review of ministerial planning department approvals. That should be reversed as well. We're neutering the planning commission, and they're already just extending themselves beyond. Take this out, make it a separate issue, don't bundle it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.
Our next speaker is Lisa Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lisa Hamilton, 323 South Dittmar, Oceanside. I do not agree with the proposal, which I understand would cut the planning commission out of the process of changes in zoning to the general plan in respect to review of quasi-judicial legislative actions. The city needs all the citizen input it can have on changes to the general plan, which affect us all. Streamlining the process diminishes citizen participation, as the planning commission hearings give citizens a chance to hear and participate in input. If only the city council is allowed to oversee the process, citizens and public will have little to no chance of participation in only one hearing. The second council here, reading is often perfunctory and performa. I urge you to turn this item down, in the interest of furthering citizen participation, not reducing it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maggie Matthews. Maggie Matthews.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Maggie Matthews, Seaside District. I am, since I am in support of my colleagues, I'm of the opinion that planning commission needs to do their job, they do it well. I've really enjoyed going to the planning commission meetings. I learn a lot. It's an opportunity for the public to weigh in, for us to mitigate them, declaw. I just, I don't understand it. I heard staff mention a list of things as rationale as to why this new action is necessary, but I didn't really hear or understand at all what's wrong, why is it not working? That wasn't explained at all, and it feels like we're trying to fix something that doesn't need fixing. Let's let planning commission do their job.
This is a public hearing item. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward at this time.
Thank you. Good evening again, Nadine Scott. I did blast off an email, and as I've been sitting here listening, it's very apparent that this is gonna eviscerate the public's ability to appeal items at the planning commission level. Having done that a few times, it's very worthwhile. We can collect signatures, or we can pay a fee, and we can appeal the basics of the project before it gets to council. If it gets to council, we're forced to file a lawsuit. So you're putting us under the gun, you're putting us at an extreme disadvantage, when we have the opportunity to voice our thoughts, have planning commission thoroughly examine the projects from a lot of different areas and views, and SEQA, and compatibility, everything in our zoning ordinance, but you're gutting it for the public. I could never agree to this. The other thing, it's shocking, thank you, Amy, why is this even included in a cleanup of an ordinance to the coastal commission? It has no place in there. It has no place until you vet it through the planning commission, and you coordinate all of our coastal, non-coastal zoning ordinance. This is the cart before the horse. It's very offensive to me. As you all may recall, I was on the Integrated Waste Commission. When we did something you didn't like, you took our powers away, and then eventually you dissolved the commission. That's gonna be the foreseen consequence of what you're doing. It's inappropriate. Giving us the right to look at projects, have them make decisions at the planning commission gives the public an added layer of input. We've improved projects, we've made them better, we've been able to work with the developers when they see a huge public response against our project. It's really to the benefit of our city. And as I said last night, most of staff doesn't live here. They're not invested in the neighborhoods like we are. I like them, they work hard, but it's not to our benefit to have staff take powers away and to insult the planning commission decision. I find that excessively rude and not needed. So I'm asking that that item be removed. Second, I noticed this is a coastal zone amendment, so, right, Amy? Amy says yes. Oh, it's both. I was concerned that all of a sudden we're giving South Oceanside and Townsite different rights than the rest of our neighborhood have. There was no rationale for that, other than a few people in Mr. Lowery's neighborhood of homes he didn't like being built. That seemed to be the impetus, plus a few community members all of a sudden didn't like taller homes. My email to you says, why doesn't this apply to all our other historic neighborhoods? I have 50, 100-year-old houses in my neighborhood. We don't want three- and four- and five-story homes. So I think that needs to be re-vetted as well. Thank you very much. Lastly, we have two lame ducks on this council. Ha, thank God. This is a very serious decision, and should not be decided by two people that will no longer be here. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing and come back to council. I have a question for staff, since the comment was made about North River Farms as an example. If this language were in place today, would the North River Farms project still have a notice public hearing in front of the planning commission?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
And I just want to make that point very clear. This code amendment does not reduce the number of public hearings before the planning commission at all. And I don't know how to make that more clear. It does not reduce the number of public hearings before the planning commission.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you very much for coming this evening and voicing your concerns about language. I've looked through the staff report to see where the, what the language actually is, because of course I listened very intently to staff's presentation, I listened to the presentation by the public, by public members, and there wasn't any specific, you know, there wasn't the specific page that you were concerned about. I believe you're talking about, for the Exhibit A, you're talking about Page 1-3, is that correct? The underlined paragraph at the end, which basically says, "When a discretionary application is contingent upon approval of a, number one, general plan amendment and/or zoning amendment, which is only exclusively done by a city council, not by the planning commission, the planning commission shall make a recommendation to the city council regarding the discretionary application and the general plan amendment and/or zoning amendment. The city council shall then review and take final action, both the discretionary application and the general plan and/or zoning ordinance amendment." Is that, can you basically nod? Yes, that's the only, because that's the only place that I see that. And what it is saying is, when there is a mixed, a project with two kinds of approvals, one that is not final, such as a zoning amendment, one that could be final, like an EIR, that what will happen is, if there is an appeal, I mean, if it's going to the council, the whole thing will go to the council, rather than piecemeal. I will tell you that that has been a real problem for me as a council member for a long, long time, and I'm actually happy to see this. Recently, I asked, I believe it was Peter, maybe Chuck, if they would sign on to bring another piece of it, I believe it was the EIR of a project, because it's really truly not fair to have a final decision on something that can only be decided by the council, like a zoning amendment, a general plan amendment. Those can only be done by the council with, and I, with a recommendation from the planning commission, and I take those recommendations from the planning commission very seriously, because they tend to be a little less formal, certainly not under the guise of, you know, being recorded, and people tend to feel much more comfortable, say, to say exactly what's on their mind and try to get some, you know, if there is a potential for changing something, to have it changed to that place. I mean, I especially encourage that kind of interaction with staff, with the applicant, with the public. That is very, very important to me, the public process. So, I guess what I'm saying is, there was a statement, "If it's not broke, why fix it?" I'm telling you that it is broke, that it is very difficult to have, to try to come up with a decision when you can't review back an EIR, or any of the appendices, say the traffic study, or, you know, I mean, those are the kind of things that really kind of handcuff me as a council member, when I'm, okay, you can only look at this, you can't look at this anymore. That's been approved by, by the planning commission, the time for appealing, the 10 days has passed, nobody, oh, sorry, we forgot, you know, a council member forgot, a member of the public forgot, to appeal that part of it too, so that the whole thing could be heard by the council. I don't know, I'm hoping that this, that I'm a little more clear, clearer than perhaps what you understood, in that there are certain decisions that can only be done by the council. And when it's mixed in with something that can be final by the planning commission, that it truly makes more sense to have the whole thing heard by the council and not just piecemeal. So, with that, the objections to this, to what's before us tonight, seems to be that major paragraph, and for me, that paragraph is acceptable. I think that it's cleaner for us. I want to be able to listen to all the comments. I will say that a lot of comments tend to be, for especially a zone amendment, or change, zone change, or general plan amendment, tend to be, tend to focus on traffic, which means that we need to look at those studies. And you're hand-tieing me if I can't do that. So, I'm going to move approval. I believe, and I've gone through this, I was asked, you know, make sure you go through this, because there are some issues in here. I would like to see, when we referred to Townsite, you know, Townsite is larger than, you know, a very, very large, a small part of Townsite, what am I saying? Townsite is a larger area than just, say, South Oceanside and some other areas in the Townsite. So I would like to see those maybe looked at further, but as to now, this is what the public has asked for in those communities, so I'm willing to support that at this point as well. So I move approval.
Councilmember Kern?
Second, one of the things, I guess to tie into what Councilmember Sanchez said, we are the legislative body, and the idea that when it comes to us, we make those legislative decisions. So the idea that to have them all come to us at once, and actually this does streamline the process, but also makes it easier. It makes it easier for people, because it's gonna come to council automatically. You don't have to go out and collect signatures, you don't go out and have to pay the money to, because you know it's gonna come to council. And all those issues that are brought up at the planning commission can be, again, brought up at council. Now, some people made some comments about lame ducks and the council not knowing what to do. You can ask staff, I can be annoying, the idea that I sit down with staff and I ask the questions. I sat down with Jeff and Amy for about an hour yesterday morning, or early this week, to go over this one item. So we do our research. So we do understand what's going on. We do ask staff about these projects and come forward. And so the idea that somehow that we're not doing our due diligence, and that we should just delegate it to the planning commission and take whatever they recommend as, and just pass that along a rubber stamp, it, that doesn't work that way. This is not the way that that system works. I do take in consideration the planning commission's recommendation, but I do make my own decisions based on my own research and asking staff and the applicants and the public about these projects. So anything we can do to streamline the process, make it more workable, make it less cumbersome, not only for applicants, but the public in general, because it does make it easier for the public in general to actually have the same number of bites at the apple. So that's gonna happen. So I am going to support this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowery?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the... I have a question for the city manager. One of the speakers said that Planning Commission has the final word on some items. Is that true?
Deputy Mayor Lowry, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, yes, some discretionary actions, yes.
So there could be items that come to the Planning Commission that they can make a decision on, and that's the end of it, no one can appeal it to the council?
No.
Oh, you're shaking your head no?
No. Generally, everything's appealable.
Yeah. So then there is no such thing as the Planning Commission having the final word?
That's pretty accurate, yes.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I'm also a little surprised that anyone in the public could make a conclusion that was just flipped on its head a second ago by a council member saying that they think this is a really great idea. I spoke with Mr. Borrego at length about this. We had two conversations about the item, and I asked why multiple items were merged in on this when it seemed that they should just be something on consent. I understand it's got to be up for public discussion. But I'm going to oppose this because I'd like to see the items broken out. So when something comes to the council, when you have multiple items on it, it's hard for the community to understand that maybe one or two of those things are really basic and simple, and it's bookkeeping and compliance with the state, but it doesn't have anything to do with us changing whether a commission or a committee is making a decision without the city council having it possibly being appealed to this body. So that's, I appreciate that you explained it very well. You sent us an email today. In our conversation that we had a week ago, I had a bunch of really stupid questions that you answered very clearly, and I think it's important that the public understand that we don't just walk in here, well, not all of us, just walk in here and have done no homework. And I think that's a really critical way of thinking, that people have decided that we just don't give a damn, that the Planning Commission does all the work, and we just come up here and vote on stuff. So I want to thank staff for putting this together, and I would really appreciate that you would break some of the things out on it. So, thank you.
Please vote.
This is the, you have the resolution for the LCP amendment, but we need to title the ordinance. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Articles 1, 4, 4A, 10, 10C, 13, and 30 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance.
Motion approved, 401. Lowry, no. Item number 24, adoption of resolution approving local coastal program amendment and requesting California Coastal Commission certification of Articles 4 and 36 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance, as previously amended by zoning amendments ZA 18-0002, ZA 18-0003, and ZA 18-0006 to allow establishment and operation of medical cannabis land uses within specific inland zoning districts and inclusion of the amended text in the local coastal program.
Open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Just staff.
Staff only.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff only.
All materials been provided to the council.
Mayor and members of the city council, LCPA 1806 before this evening is associated with zoning amendment 1802, 1803, and 1806, which through adoption of the three associated zoning ordinances earlier this year set forth the regulatory scheme for the medical cannabis ordinance uses within the City of Oceanside. The ordinance already in effect allow the establishment and the operation of medical cannabis cultivation, distribution, storage, testing, and delivery services in specified inland areas of the city. However, since at the time of zoning ordinance processing, the city did not process a local coastal plan amendment along with it, and it included Articles 4 and 36, which are citywide, the city must now process a local coastal plan amendment to complete that process. The Planning Commission considered the proposed amendment on October 22 and voted unanimously to forward their proposal with a positive recommendation to the city council. Legal notification has been provided, along with a nine-week, 1/8-page newspaper ad and notice of availability for this particular item. Our recommendation this evening is to adopt the resolution approving LCPA 1806 and requesting California City Council, California Coastal Commission certification of Articles 4 and 36. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item may come forward at this time. Mayor Weiss, I see none.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Come back to council. Councilmember Kern.
Move adoption resolution. This is just a cleanup thing. It doesn't change anything that we developed with the medical cannabis about not having cannabis activities in the coastal zone. It's just that we have to make it citywide and actually have to file with the Coastal
Motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Fellar, no. Mayor Weiss, we did receive one last request to speak on off agenda items. Would you like to hear it?
Sure.
Yes. Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Better change that to three minutes and not nine. I won't talk for nine. Anyway, Mayor and councilmembers, I think, well, I will share with you my misunderstanding. When you say, when you give your disclosures, I would humbly recommend that instead of saying just "staff," say, give us some clue. Like I had a two-hour meeting with the Planning Commission on, Planning Department on this. I talked with so-and-so on this, because, you know, we're on the outside. We really don't know that that's what happens. Like one time, I remember visiting with Jack one time about an item, good, whatever it was, Grandview Development, and he told me that he had had Jonathan Borrego and the planner right there in his office for hours. And I was like, "Oh, really?" That was, I had no clue. So when you say "staff," maybe, maybe expand on that just a little bit, so we know how much of your time is really deeply invested into understanding these issues. Just a humble suggestion. Thank you very much.
No further public.
Are there any general councilmember items? We have, just so you know, just a general information item, there's a prediction of heavy rains. We have crews out that are prepared for it. Just be careful when you're out there and be aware. And before we adjourn, I would like to have a moment of silence for Brett Ann Gregory, who is one of our dispatchers, who just recently passed away in a car accident, and we're going to miss her dearly. So with that, if we could please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you, and with that, we'll be adjourned until 3:30 Wednesday, December 5.